We will call a meeting to order here. In the agenda, first, is there any additions or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's a few changes. You can strike the preliminary plat lake storage south from Dave Rush's items. We have an addition under the county coordinator, HR director, adding a temporary library position. And under the work session, we have added legislative panel discussion topics. We're starting with resolution 2555 today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead. Oh, second.
All right, we're gonna go to Jay, Jeff, Jeff, Jeff for number one. All right.
I'll second it.
And, yep, Shane got second. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is approved draft minutes of July 1st, 2025 regular meeting. Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Lanay, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today I have an, the item I have is regarding a bailiff position that we are currently hiring. The individual that we're looking at hiring has 36 years of law enforcement experience. And so what I'm looking for today is to increase the step that he would start at. It's very common now in law enforcement because of the shortage of personnel for lateral transfers. I'm not requesting the step 10, I'm requesting a step eight to pay grade eight. And so this is a armed bailiff position, so it is a licensed peace officer position. And as I said, he has 36 years of experience. It, he works in a smaller sheriff's office in a different state, but part of his duties are actually court security because it is a smaller agency. It's one of those where you have to be a jack of all trades. And so he does court security and does all the scheduling for court security currently, as well as patrol and everything else, so.
Mr. Chair, try the, and Lee, the, the grade is eight for the position, and we're just asking for a step, from step one to step eight.
So, yep, the position is pay grade eight.
Okay.
And I'm asking for a step eight.
Okay.
To recognize the experience that he already has.
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
And it's hard to, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Tabitha?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, I have two items for you, seeking approval for the first item, to approve the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging Title III B grant application. We submit this grant application for senior services annually to support the work of our senior coordinator. That grant supports things like education, outreach, all of the individualized support that Bonnie provides in our senior services office. Just as a point of reference, Bonnie sees about 151 people on average per month through the various things that she does, both in our community and just people coming into our office. And so this grant fund significantly supports the work that she does in that office. So we are requesting our grant application is for $25,000, there's a fifth, or, excuse me, $25,000, and there's a 15% county portion of that, which you'll see there, the 3,750. So we're just requesting $21,250 in federal dollars. What has happened historically, if there were additional funds available, is they reached back out to grant applicants that were awarded those funds to see if you were interested in additional stuff. Right now, they're, they are anticipating some federal cuts to that, and so that is why we landed at the number that we did. So we're just looking for board approval to submit the grant application as that's required in order to submit.
All righty, thank you. Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, I had a question for Tabitha. So Tabitha, it's gonna cost us $3,750 if we get it?
Correct, that would be the portion that we would contribute to them.
Do you have those funds available?
We do.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Shane, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item that I have for you is requesting a few different things. We were awarded a $120,000 grant from the Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration. This grant is to provide early engagement opportunities for individuals at risk of civil commitment for mental illness. This work has been developed over the last several years. There's been a lot of advocacy around ensuring early access to treatment and service coordination for these individuals. But there's no funding structure for it, unfortunately. And so we've been trying to be creative in the ways that we've been able to do this work, but we're really excited to actually have some funding available to implement that. So we applied for this grant to perform early engagement. It'll be done by an adult mental health case manager. And again, we'll really just try to improve the outcomes for individuals at risk of civil commitment. Civil commitment is one of the more costly pieces for our agency when it comes to state-operated treatment costs, those types of things. So we do see it not only as a, as an opportunity to fund that staffing, but also as a way to decrease some of those much more extensive costs at the deeper end of services. So this morning, I am looking for approval of the grant contract, which you have before you, signatory authority to actually sign the contract in DocuSign, and then a resolution to, to accept those funds.
Mr. Chair, question. Tabitha?
Yes.
It says in other community, do you work with CBHH here in town then too with that?
We do work with the CBHH, yep. If we have individuals here, we do have some established relationships with staff. The way that the central pre-admission system works is that if you have somebody who needs that level of care, you sort of submit them to central pre-admissions, which is sort of the state-level operating system, and then they determine vet availability, and so local individuals.
I know the, the beds are a premium, but does that give us a little bit of a hedge on them, if, you know what I mean, getting?
Yeah, yep, we do have good relationships with them, absolutely.
I'll make the motion to approve. Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, it is a resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2555.
2255, eh? 2555, you're right. I'm reading it wrong. All right. Thank you.
And then I second.
All right. You got that, Lanay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Call the question.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So just a couple items for you today. First one on the agenda, we opened bids last week on SAP 021614018. So that is the Centerline Culverts, CASA 14 outside of Miltonau. You have a summary of bids in your packet. I also have the full abstract if you want to take a look at that. That apparent little bidder is ACM, which is Alderink Construction Masters. They're out of Princeton, Minnesota. I have not worked with them, so I reached out to a couple of county engineers in the Princeton area just to kind of get an idea of what their reputation is. I also did some Google searches to look through and seeing what's going on, anything against them. Looking through the Minnesota court report, there are multiple judgments out against this company for not paying their subcontractors. At that point, I reached out to the county attorney, looked through the spec book a little bit, also looked at Douglas County's procurement policy, which does say that any or all bids may be rejected if there is a sound documented reason. Asked the county attorney if we feel that that is sound documented reason not paying subs. They also have a history of not completing projects on time. We feel there is that documented reason. So I would like to make the recommendation that we reject the bid from ACM, and we award this to Midwest Contracting.
Mr. Chair, Midwest, we've used them before, haven't we?
Midwest actually built 24 for us two years ago.
Okay, so we have had experience with that company?
Yes.
And they did well?
They did very well.
Okay. Well, then I will make a motion to award the contract to Midwest Contracting LLC in the amount of $1,378,023.95.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I would just like to add that from a legal perspective, I, I don't think that this is the lowest responsible bidder. And this board's purpose is to be good stewards of taxpayer funding, and I, I don't think that we can accept the lowest bidder in this case. And that's the reason why I recommended this course of action.
Okay, well, thank you, Chad. All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, Lanay, please.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Next item that I have was to approve an engineering contract for roundabout design. If you guys recall, a few meetings ago, let you know that we were gonna send out an RFP to design the roundabout at CASA 46 and Pioneer Road. Those came back last Friday. You've got the, the results sitting in front of you. So to, to put a RJR, which is a roundabout justification report and survey design, Interstate out of Alexandria here came, came in low, $105,000 for that. Plus, there's some geotechnical work, so soil boring's making sure that if we gotta move out any other dirt in order to get in good solid aggregates, that's kind of what the geotech report would tell us. So their grand total, they're all in for $118,140, $120, excuse me. Talking with them, they have not designed a roundabout in the past. They've done other roadwork, they've, they've designed roads, they've designed all kinds of other stuff. They haven't done a, a roundabout yet. So that would be the only sticking point with awarding to Interstate. Woodseth is $65,000 higher, which is a significant amount of money as well. We know that Woodseth can perform the design services. They've designed several roundabouts for us. I'm actually okay with either one. If we want to give Interstate a shot, I do think they're trying to get a, a foot in the door, get some county work in the future. And I think that's kind of why they're as low as they are. They're confident they can do the work.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Is there any recourse if they can't perform the work?
Don't they have a bond? Don't they have a bond?
So there, there wouldn't necessarily be a bond in the, in a contract for that service. So there's multiple, there's multiple steps along the way where we, we look over what they're working on, and if they're not working in the right direction, we either try to correct them or we can, we can cancel the contract. But as far as to not be able to provide that service, I don't think there is anything.
Okay, and as far as other services that they've provided around here, they've done very well on.
They've done very well.
I'll make a motion to approve Interstate for the roundabout at the cost of $118,120.
Thank you, Tim. Board's wishes.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions?
No. Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, we, my opinion of that project, but I, I like, you know, Interstate's a local also. Maybe we can get some of the Dubai prices where they belong. Looks like maybe they're gonna get trained by you guys. I don't know, maybe that's what they're hoping for. But if it saves us the taxpayer $65,000, I think it's great, great opportunity, maybe for them also. So that's probably why they're, they're probably getting a little on-the-job training on the deal if they hadn't designed one yet, so. And you guys know what, you've done them now, enough now that you should, you guys know the way. Thank you.
All right. All righty. Lanay, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Last item that we have is a drainage request out on ditch 21, and this is a fun one also.
Good morning. So I have a drainage request on county ditch 21, which is south of Millerville. Last year, about 1,000 feet of tile was repaired, and two of the landowners would like to see the remaining extent of it repaired. It's kind of a challenging site, and it would, I don't have, I'm not super confident in my estimate, but it could be up to about $100,000, somewhere in there in cost. The ditch currently has a $76,000 loan against it. So I guess I'm seeing if you guys want to proceed. I would get quotes to get exact numbers before we would start anything, but if they're that far under, do you want to proceed at all?
Mr. Chair, is, is this the one where the landowners paid for last year's, or, or they just paid 77% of it last year also?
The way the benefits on that ditch are set up, they pay 77% of the amount that gets paid on it.
And they will again on this one, but it's another. I see Vicky's not here, but we can. What percent are they at? You remember what they're paying down each, each year?
I don't remember the percent down each year. It's. Yeah, it's bringing in $12,442 a year currently at a 200% levy.
Yeah, we're gonna have to adjust that.
Yeah.
Especially because it's gonna add another $25,000, yeah. Mr. Chair.
The requests come in, I suppose we should do it. I mean, at least have them look at it and bring it back to when we know we got real numbers.
I got a question for Mike. Them laterals are all part of the county ditch?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did already speak to, like, the Board of Soil and Water, and they did approve it. There would be a tentative liability if this would perfectly drain that tillable farm soil. We would be liable for replacement acres. The chances of that happening are almost zero.
Basically, it'd be hayland if anything.
Yeah, basically, they're looking to get hay ground out of the deal.
Yeah, because that, I worked on that when I worked for Public Works, and it's not the greatest system.
No.
You made a motion on that? I think we make a motion, we get, because we, we're not approving it, we're approving Mike to go ahead and get the numbers so we can come back. But I would, yeah, I think we should, because they put the request in.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
What does they take in annually for revenue?
For revenue on that?
Yeah.
Currently at a 200% levy, it's at $12,442.
Any other questions?
This would get it almost to $180,000. And I know these two are responsible for 77%, but you can do the math on that. That's gonna take another 15 years just to get it back. And that's with no, no other ongoing maintenance and whole ditch. That's, so we're gonna have to adjust.
That's what I look at, at the percentage.
That's what I was saying about, you know, we gotta make sure we look at both ways. We're gonna have to raise it if, even though these two landowners pay over three-fourths of it, it's still, should be a little quicker. I don't think Vicky would like it to have a loan out there that long on that.
No.
So. We don't like it that much longer either.
When it gets up over $100,000, that's.
Well, and if they're only reducing at 12 a year, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. But he'll have, if we do approve this today, that, it might get real numbers, and we'll know exactly where we're at.
Okay, Charlie made the motion. Jeff seconded it. All right, Lanay?
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Some items for your consideration today. Microphones are sensitive. So our first item is licenses for excavator landscaper. We have one license for Central Minnesota Excavation. We recommend approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the excavator.
Thank you, Shane.
CNM.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the next two items are from our Planning Advisory Commission meeting last Tuesday. The first item is a preliminary plat. This is a one-lot plat in Mo Township, Pretchule addition. Planning Commission reviewed this. The applicant's proposing a six-plus acre plat on CASA 8 with a remnant of two and a half acres to the north. The north remnant would access the existing township road, and the platted lot would maintain the existing access to county 8. Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended approval as presented.
All righty. Board's wishes?
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So our next item is a conditional use permit for a storage planned unit development. This is in Carless Township, and I'd like to walk through this because it's a, these planned unit development projects have a lot of components to them. We did receive a considerable amount of feedback on this particular application, and we're provided with a significant amount of information. I would note, so this was presented to us back in May at a planning commission meeting, and the result of that meeting was ultimately that the applicant asked to have the application tabled and to go back and review the proposed conditions that staff were looking at and to adjust their application. So the meeting last Tuesday was essentially a revised, or as the county considered it, a new application for this. So the applicant presented to us a conditional use permit application for, it says 69 lot storage planned unit development. It's actually 68 units. The units would be individually owned, ultimately platted out, so that each unit owner would own a piece of real estate under that unit. And as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, the plat portion of this was tabled by, requested to be tabled by the applicant, and tabled by the planning commission to determine the outcome of this conditional use permit. So the application, if we go to the schematic drawing, this 25-plus acre property is located on County State Aid Highway 42, just south of the intersection with Prairie Road, Carless Township Road. And you can see that the applicant has laid out here 68 lots. The lots are different in size. The lots to the west would accommodate a 40-by-60 building and are larger. And the lots to the east there would accommodate a, what is it, a 30-by-48 building? And there's slightly more of those. The applicant proposed to put in a tree and shrub buffer along the county road there. They're proposing an access to County Road 42, as well as an access to Prairie Road, the Township Road. In addition, in both the Development Review Team meeting and the first meeting of the Planning Commission on this application, the applicant was aware that stormwater collection and treatment would be required. So they're proposing in here stormwater collection conveyances, as well as treatment areas, which you can see on the schematic drawing there in blue. And it would provide treatment for that water, meeting the NPDES permit requirements as the minimum standard, which would be treatment for the first inch of runoff. In addition, the applicant has proposed to complete this project if needed in two phases. What you see on the schematic there is the south half of the project would be completed as phase one, and the north half as phase two. The applicant proposed to install larger trees in the visual buffer along the state, or the county highway there, and also to install an irrigation system with which to adequately water those trees so that they have better survival and growth rates. If we go one more schematic, you can see there's an existing grove of conifer trees there. So the applicant was proposing to remove some of those trees, the larger ones, and to spade them in in a single row, as well as to purchase trees from the Conservation District to complete the three-row buffer. At the same time, the applicant would propose to put in the north or second-phase tree shrub buffer along the county road, and then delay their development for a number of years. I believe the applicant proposed three years of delay between the planting and when they would start construction. The buildings that are proposed, as I indicated, 40-by-60 buildings and 30-by-50 approximately. The building heights in there, at least the larger buildings, would have a total height of approximately 27 feet at the peak of the building. And if you look through your packet, you see that there's a cross-section that the applicant provided in there showing the height at which those buildings would be placed, so the floor elevation of the building there. And then to the left, you can see the elevation above that stormwater collection, showing that the tree buffer would be planted at an elevation higher than the floor elevation of those buildings. And then there's a final schematic provided. Obviously, when you look at these schematics, there's vertical exaggeration there because of the condensed horizontal distance. But you can see what the project would look like at build-out, the height of the buildings and the proposed height of those trees. So based on this, we at the Planning Commission received a lot of feedback at the public hearing, and many members of the public commented on the proposed application. on the proposed application being in close proximity to a residential development, which is the Pines, which is located to the northwest of this development, as well as the fact that the development would be located adjacent to 42, which in this location is designated as the Glacial Ridge Trail Scenic Byway and that the buildings would be visible directly from that roadway as well as from the development. We received many letters and comments on the proposed development that the buildings would be unsightly, would perhaps depreciate the value of the properties or obscure current views that people have. It's possible that the buildings and the lighting that was associated with them could interfere with the view of the night sky and people's enjoyment of their property in that area. There were also comments related to additional traffic that the development would bring to the area and that there are already traffic concerns at the intersection of County Road 42 and Prairie Road. There was some discussion as well about the runoff, that the amount of impervious surface coverage and the development would cause additional runoff to occur from the development that could impact adjacent properties. There was also some comments about the... Whether or not water and sewer would be provided. Some discussion about water in this area. It has been noted that the location of this project is adjacent to what used to be called the Cluver landfill. It is a closed, unlined landfill that is owned by the state of Minnesota. There is a contaminant plume that that landfill has generated in the groundwater in that area. And that contaminant plume, over a number of years, has been slowly migrating to the west-southwest of that landfill. And so that point was raised about this development. And I think the... Hopefully, the correct perception on this is any sort of development in this area that would use groundwater via a well that's installed would have to be cautious about the location of that contaminant plume. So some discussion that was generated about the use of the property for residential purposes. I think there may perhaps be some limitations to that depending upon whether or not a well could be put in that would provide water to residential structures in this area. So it certainly isn't a foregone conclusion that the property couldn't be developed for residential purposes. But it would take some extra study to determine if a drinking water well could be put in that would be safe for residential development. Another question was asked about what the applicant could do with the property without a conditional use permit. Our ordinance indicates that this is in a rural residential-zoned area. And as such, being a 25-acre property, they could construct a residence and an unlimited number of accessory structures with no limit on the size to those accessory structures. So they could not rent those structures out. They could not sell the structures without a conditional use permit. But as you can imagine, I think my analogy that I provided was if we had an applicant who collected airplanes and wanted to construct a number of small airplane hangars on the property, they certainly could do that under our current ordinance without the requirement for planting a tree buffer along that roadway. In that regard, I'd also direct your attention. The applicant provided additional information to us about structures that they observed on what is part of the Glacial Ridge Trail Scenic Byway. That byway, if you're familiar with it, is a series of transportation routes in our area, what we consider the Glacial Ridge area, which extends down from Wilmer and Benson all the way up here to Douglas County. The purpose of the scenic byway designation is obviously to encourage people, tourists and others, to drive on our backroads rather than to get on the interstate and zip right through our community. Its purpose is to bring people to destinations and those destinations have a tourist nature to them. 29, State Trunk Highway 29, is part of that corridor. These photographs were taken by the applicant south of the interstate in an area between the interstate and County Road 4. And they show buildings, larger post-framed construction buildings and pre-cast concrete buildings. I believe there's a solar installation adjacent to the REA facility. So the applicant wanted to share with the Planning Commission that this too is an area of the scenic byway where these uses were permitted by the county and that no additional screening or buffering was required. I will note that at the meeting, one of the members of the Planning Commission did ask the question and observe that much of this area where these buildings are is zoned either commercial or industrial. But it is important to note that these are along that byway. So all of that information being gathered and the input from the public, and we've attempted to provide much, if not all, of that to you for your review. There was a good discussion at Planning Commission about these various aspects and considerations. Ultimately, a motion was made by the Planning Commission to deny the proposed application based on its location, its proximity to residential development and along the scenic byway and that the construction of these buildings, that this development, the amount of time it would take for a tree buffer to provide adequate screening would be significant, that the development would add some traffic to the area. And so that motion was carried on a 4-2 vote by the Planning Commission and brought to you. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You've got a lot of information that you were provided, so I'm guessing that you may have questions.
You know, I guess I'll make a comment, Dave. I did see the report and the planning and zoning with the concerns. And there was a ton of conversation on this thing. I can't tell you how much time was put into this here thing. And the... I had a lot of feedback. So I'm just saying, this has been a very big topic. And I just want to know that there was a lot of time spent on this. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I got a question. So David, you're saying he doesn't have to rezone or get a conditional... Or he needs a conditional use permit to put those in?
Yes. So that was, I think, often the public misunderstands some of the process that we are engaged in. So a rezoning is not required here. Planned unit development is a conditionally permitted use in almost all of our zoning districts. So we have similar storage building planned unit developments. Actually, fairly close. To the east of this proposed development is Store Smart North. And that required a conditional use permit. But it does not require a rezoning of the land. Through that conditional use permit, then, we can identify through conditions, we can restrict or allow whatever uses we think are appropriate in there. But yes, it wouldn't change the zoning.
Follow-up question. Because with reading all the stuff from the people, they're saying it's zoned agriculture or residential. But they can get a conditional use permit to make it a building site or a storage.
That is correct. And I think the public's observation is how the land is being used.
Correct. Yeah. I know it's being farmed now.
Mr. Chair, I got a question here.
Yes, sir.
Dave, I looked in the staff recommendations and it says there's supposed to be one row of 12... Planted 12-foot in height and one row 6-foot in height. And on example 3, it shows a 4-foot and a 2-foot and then a 24-inch shrub. So...
Yeah. That's... Mr. Chair, Mr. Kalina, excellent question. That was also brought up at the Planning Commission meeting. I think, again, in any of these applications, you have what the applicant is proposing. And then you have what may be discussed at a meeting as well as what the staff might recommend in their report. And so in that cross-section that I think you're referring to, when the applicant submitted this to us, their proposal was a 24-inch shrub when planted. I believe a 4-foot stock tree and then a 2-foot or a conservation stock tree. And it's important to note that at the meeting on Tuesday, the applicant did indicate that what they would do in Phase 1 is substitute out the 4-foot tree or... And spade in trees from that property. They did not mention a height. But I think in the staff report, if that was the case, we had suggested at least 12 feet. I know that the applicant was probably considering trees of that height or higher. There is a limit to what you can do.
And then I got another question on Phase 2. Are the trees going to have to be all planted first before Phase 1 can start for Phase 2?
Well... If you're... Mr. Chair, if you're looking at the proposed conditions by staff, that is what staff said, is that all the trees needed to go in at the same time so that... I think our thought was if they're going in, put them all in and then, you know, Phase 2 could occur at some later point. You know, obviously, the applicant was looking at three years and staff had recommended five, but, you know, no decision was made on that. So I'm... I think the applicant, you can note in there that they were looking at when conservation stock in that Phase 2, I think, would be available from the soil and water district. So I think, again, that timing, June 1st versus November, you know, so it'd be six months later that they were... At least in that schematic, they were proposing those trees would be put in six months later. Did I answer your question?
Well, somewhat.
Okay. It does say in here. I was just reading it. That it has to be the whole border.
The whole border, but I'm wondering about the height.
Okay. You're wondering about the height. So the height of the... So, again, what the applicant would be proposing versus what staff might have proposed. And so the applicant, you know, if you look at that cross-section, the applicant in Phase... I don't think it shows on the cross-section, but they were proposing 24, a 4-foot and a 2-foot tree. I believe in...
Yeah, it's under item number 6, David. It says there that it's 12-foot in height and 6-foot in height.
So in Phase 2, they were proposing a 2-foot minimum height on both rows of trees in Phase 2. Again, I understand the confusion here. You have what the applicant is proposing to do. You have what staff is recommending. And, you know, keeping in mind that no conclusion was ever made to that because of the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Because I read in here on 7B, "The tree shrub buffer and vegetative ground cover for Phase 2 of the project shall be planted, installed simultaneously with Phase 1." But then they have to be the conifer trees not less than four feet when planted.
Yes, that is correct. That's what we proposed.
Mr. Chair, I got one more follow-up question. With the well and the water being what it could be there, is... Was the applicant putting some wells in for these buildings at all? Water, sewer, or anything?
So the applicant did not propose to put water into the buildings.
Okay.
That...
Because I know they have them to the east.
Correct. And in... It was in the second, if you will, this application that was revised and brought back to the Planning Commission on Tuesday, that the applicant proposed that they would install a well in order to irrigate. You know, if water was available to those buildings, I don't think it would be an issue other than if buildings are supplied with water, then we have to look at wastewater collection, if that's the case. I think the applicant did not have any intention to get into that because of the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Well, we have talked about this and I guess we have to come to a conclusion here. And again, planning and zoning did make a determination as to not to approve this. And so it's the board's decision here to determine what we're going to do. Yeah, you talked to me on the phone, but I told you that we don't have a topic time until after the meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and I apologize to interrupt. We've had this occur before and so I'd like to make sure I raise the point with you five gentlemen. The public hearing on this was scheduled and held in front of the Planning Commission last Tuesday. It would be my professional opinion that if you grant the applicant time to speak to you this morning, that you should grant then equal time to anybody to comment. And we haven't advertised this as a public hearing. We have not let parties know that you're going to grant time. But again, it is certainly up to you as the chair to do that, if you'd like. But just be aware that if you do so, then, you know, we're not granting others the same ability to speak.
Yes, you're correct. Yeah, I think... I mean, we went through the process on this project, just like we have other projects. And everything that should have been said should have been said by now. And... We're at that point where we are here to make a decision. So Laney, I'm going to call the question. Oh, yes. Kind of motion first.
Mr. Chair, just for the benefit of the board, obviously, you know you have two choices in terms of to, you know, uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission or you can overturn that recommendation. But just so you're aware, you also have the ability, if you choose to, if you're seeking additional information, you could table this for some specific information that you'd like to have that would help you make your decision. It is also a possibility, if you feel like something was missed here by the Planning Commission, you can remand it back to the Planning Commission for a specific reason, for them to consider something that you feel that they haven't. But I just wanted to make you aware of what your options were this morning.
Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I will make the motion to deny to follow the Planning Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Tim.
What did you say, Tim? I want to understand that better. That you're going to do what?
To deny and follow the decision of the Planning Advisory Commission.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I thank you, Tim. Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Rapp?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's appropriate for you to ask...
Absolutely, absolutely.
And to the applicant.
And to the applicant.
Yes, absolutely, all that'll be provided to the applicant when we complete it.
Yes.
I will do that and bring that back to you.
Thank you.
I have no other items for you this morning.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Good.
David, are you sticking around? David, are you sticking around?
I'll come back.
Good morning.
Morning.
I just have one item this morning, just looking for a motion to approve bills totaling two million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion to pay the bills.
I second.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Jeff. Laney, please.
Wei?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You should have the taxes paid off by now. Point six, it was bigger now. Lee. Yeah, Lee, yeah, yeah, I thought, yeah, yep, okay. And Don, and Don.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Bart and Don's with me, too, so...
Good morning.
So I'll just kind of give you a little history. So as we say goodbye to our long-term Assistant Library Director, we, of course, are filling that position, and part of that is getting the new, the new person hired, kind of trained as much as possible. We have an opportunity to have some overlap between the outgoing Assistant Director and the incoming, so we're happy about that. So what we're here to ask for is a temporary part-time position because the person coming in is not quite ready to start full-time, but her and Don were able to work out some scheduling where they could overlap and she could get some training. So again, a good thing. So essentially, I'm here to ask the board to approve a part-time position. It's a, it would be temporary until the time where this person would be able to start full-time, which is going to be approximately mid-September, I believe.
September fifteenth.
And so once that would occur, we would eliminate this part-time position and just go back to our normal setup of one assistant, full-time exempt, library director. And I did not mention, but this temporary part-time position would be hourly rather than salaried. So we would just pay like an hourly employee. They wouldn't have accruals because our part-time employees don't have accruals. They wouldn't have opportunity to take benefits until they were here full-time. So those are some of the things we worked through, Don and I, and then yesterday, we met with the candidate and explained this to her also.
All righty. Thank you, Lee.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Don, when's Tammy's last day, or has it happened?
Tammy's actually using up her vacation currently, so, excuse me, her last day should be August fourth or fifth. We've kind of...
So she's not working right now?
She is not working.
So you're gonna train her in?
Tammy is willing to come in.
Oh, nice.
And the board had approved that. I did bring the minutes from our last board meeting, our April board meeting, where you had made the motion.
I know, I was bringing it up so they could hear it.
And do you want me to read it out?
No.
Oh, okay.
They're, I just wanted it so they knew that what was going on, that Tammy was willing to come in.
Yes, she is willing to come in and not work a full day. It would probably be two to four hours, just to answer any questions and just guide her.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Wei?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All righty, with that, we have any items from the floor? Any items from the floor? No items from the floor. All righty, we move on. We are going into closed session, are we?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we can make a motion to move to a closed session.
I make a motion that we move into closed session.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shane. Laney, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Wei?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All righty, with that, we have any items from the floor? Any items from the floor? No items from the floor. All righty, we move on. We are going into closed session, are we?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we can make a motion to move to a closed session.